Marama asulir rogu ilmlosi biulmei. Bolse bedel gukmei bebir raurele de da kutmokla. Bokma asmrel tial ngiamo mungelol mlsils ere algotl toku betsel londibrigid el mora order. Clergam warolgon.
Senator Regis Agitaya.
Oy.
Senator Kukbay Kikubo Inabo.
Oy.
Senator Jonathan Shoy Saal.
Oy.
Senator Stevenson J. Cuarte.
Oy.
Senator TJ Imru Ramangsau.
Oy.
Senator Mark U. Erbelaw Rudin.
Oy.
Senator Rumi Sangabao.
Oy.
Senator Kazuki El Tops Sungino.
Oy.
Senator Andrew Tavalwal.
Oy.
Senator Mason Ngirebangal Whipps. Floor Leader Cecilil El Dabel.
Oy.
Vice President Cry Marur. President Hokons Paulis.
Oy.
Mr. President, nganiakorum.
Maria korum bolse bedel mesaurele de don tira floor lider gidl El Dabel bolon tigay gregid ea Senator Marur ma Senator Ngirebangla excuse. Senator El Dabel.
Mr. President, tamal lungili tasil sinmergaw ma arvekal taqal senator si Happy Bilired Ister. Edammo domesa kalender gidde, Mr. President, tamal korava toka nga ra tial ma altumta tial kalender gid ma qada muu raurele. Ning nganiya ikiel bebir asiraksel dirga dongi la mang qada ma muulil mora ikiel items se edel kutmokra el al time. Qada morsil item 4. Edanouta tablol journal el nga item 4. For adoption ngani seal second day journal, morsil fourth day journal. Ma kralia blanke tla motion el adaptai ikiel tial tablol journal.
Seeda motionu namdu ngeseq namdu tirgen rogu ilgo ngel du oy. Ontok. Namay. Floor Lider.
Edal molme president, el morsil item 5. Eda nganiya ikiel communication under press communication, ngani seal press communication 11-34. Tiang giril sel signing statement ter sel FY 2021 anual batset El Belza ngia president. Oderu kliakapiringil mergid. Edanouta ngi direk al danout ter sel press cam 11-35. Ngi appointment ter Mr. Santi Asanomalmo Postmaster General. Danouta ngim sel dabor apropiata parta kalender eda omisa ngi. Direkal danout ter press communication 11-36. Tiang transmittal presidential proclamation number 21-237. Direkal ba domisa ngi klo tutel communication. Direkal danout ter press communication 11-27. Tiang babiel nar attorney general, salder sel role attorney general mara under sel executive order 444. Qada ikiel klawal communication nar obisa president teme mde edanout edirek al dabor apropiata parta kalender, bolse edel discuss bebir ngi. Edal molm mala item 6, ma item 7 nteka ngani. Eda dabora standing committee report me gun tira short wishes, Mr. President.
Short wishes. Qudel mukodongia sesionergid el mora order. Floor Lider.
President, edamora sel item 8, standing committee reports. Mad adaptra Senate committee report, standing committee report number 11-20. Tiang giril sel Senate Resolution 11-23. Don tira cleram maliwetaito ngi el report.
Clergam iwetaito.
Senate Resolution confirming Senate Resolution number 11-23. A Senate Resolution confirming the presidential appointment of Ms. Jacqueline Alexander to serve as a member of the Board of Directors of the Palau Public Utilities Corporation for a term of three years. The Senate Resolution amalaira presidential appointment ter Jacqueline Alexander el moada labor de directors of Palau Public Utilities Corporation al kalsela edel rak.
Floor Lider.
Don tira chair ma committee report.
Chairman Agitaya.
Sal, Mr. President, tamalun olosong malaqaw, arvekal senator, sir, elala olosong. Awuli tira senator Inabom bol maskita report tial resolution, sulak.
Senator Inabo.
Sulange, Mr. President. Tak marama asulila chairman Agitaya mas kahatial makmu report tial standing committee report number 11-20. Eda ngi amu report agiril Senate Resolution 11-23. Giril appointment ter Ms. Jacqueline Alexander el moada labor de PPUC ledel rak. Mr. President, sera March 12, 2021, ya Senate Resolution 11-23. Able ble mintrodu sa ngi by request emilngay el mortel committee Energy, Public Utilities and Telekams Committee rau. Ma komiti amlo meser sel resume ra Ms. Alexander. Enga mal al gamat eklo ba background eda ngi ra accounting. Edirekal mlangara management ter PPUC. Edirekal mlangara order ra private sector. Mangal Ms. Alexander amlo certified public accountant, sera 1995. Emle member American Institute of Certified Public Accountants, sera 1995 el mo 2015. Sera 2006 el mo 2015, ya Ms. Alexander amle chief financial officer, CFO ra PPUC. Mang malle klo aparta ngi ra management ter PC especially ikiel financial operations ma arulela PC abal oilel financially sustainable. Edirekal bal oilelo mesai ikiel internal controls, sel giril rogu ilkat maklila PPUC. Emlo sabel luosi a grant el mo lospe ringa PC replace sel accounting system ngi, mabiling system ngi. Ah, PP, ah, Ms. Alexander, edirekal me chairman er sel committee, sel transition committee. Eda ngi amlo ngua Palau Water and Sewer Corporation. Ikiel operations eda ngi el mo integrate eda ngi el mo parta PPUC. Mang sera during a teiki del transition phase eng malle makasaya ikiel dulaseng koram lo o alit atu laurior mal uben korra disruptions ra operations ra PPUC. Ling Ms. Alexander amanle kloa al al nasuwe re teiki del transition process. Ma bebir atsifmentra amu il atsifmentra Ms. Alexander nga ra resume ngi mande axel moditel. Tiwa islasa Ms. Alexander amle oriora deloitentus Tomatsu. Eda ngi auditing firm mang batol position sal blangira ateloitentus from 1995 el mo 2004. Akamiti edirekal emlo sabel lodurok la questionnaire eda ngi el mo ra Ms. Alexander logera qualifications eda ngi, ma experience eda ngi. Ma sel wasengonge el mosur labor de PPUC. Mang milu sal mail malwaseyaw ngonge el mo oriora board member of PC. Eh, sel questionel wasi ngarau ulamang ngonge el mo labor de PC. Eng lo o ngonge el waseng ndiakal ndiakal sal neceseril soal mora board. Ding ngomrangal waseng ngaralit al atrabway lolngasera abwayer gidra plur belaw mang ngonge el mortel board el mostapel lolngasera a PPUC and in that way will ngasera other belaw. Mang ngomrangal wasey a board of PPUC agiril set financial and operation goals, ma milestones, edirekal institute strategic plan. El sabel ospe ringa PPUC atsiva ikiel goal sa ngi. Sera March 24, eh, Mr. President, ya kamiti amlo o nganiya kiakalil meeting ringi lubangila Ms. Alexander. Mang nakamiti mallo om dangil wasey ikiel bebir angora angasangasela audas ma ikiel implementation ikiel strategic goals ra PPUC. Amal sabel am Ms. Alexander el mo ngasera giril sera longa dodur ngi ya kamiti yang mallo o himalno madaswar esil wasey mern nganiya experience eda ngi ra a management, ma financial knowledge sabel labora PC yang mal klowal nasuwe. Mang eda tara able mentioner ya Ms. Alexander, mal gor omaklatkal wasey olbira kulu la, ble olsoal lolngasera, tiri kel koram kasautu dira arala denki tir ma relmir. Andi social programs, agiril programs raha valment. Nka sabel a PPUC el mo o administera social programs, selinda ka daka informational available el ngatir. Sabel om dangil wasen taq qualify el momleka social programs, samataatiak. Mang mwayal sal el focus, trai kel gukmal ngarala PPUC. Ma komiti amalulngita support tial resolution number 11-23. Eh, mal qadamal asur al wasey klowal nasuwe ra board ma PPUC. Al sugum akadongua Ms. Alexander el mo member aboard of PPUC. Seeda report ra resolution eh eh, Mr. President, ya kamiti malulngita support ra rogu senator sel tial nomination ra Ms. Alexander. Sulange, Mr. President.
Sulange, Senator Inabo, ngariya sol megakaminta. Nteka Senator Isal.
Malungil afternoon, Mr. President. Senate, barvekal members in attendance. Akmalmo odosia support ra nga almo ya kamiti report, ndiak membera kamiti mo sankyo yes. Follow by sankyo yes. La namani el mo member tian, si isqualified, si isexperience. PPUC init something of her caliber el morteandru wala. Ak ti milnguiwetari report, morsil laster sentence ra page 2. Weera over sel base under foregoing kamiti therefore regiments. Qaramlum elaol sel firstel sentences sel laster paragraph. Equal wasey on March 24, 2021. The committee held a hearing with Ms. Alexander. Eh, sel next sentence, seeda tregebel koranganiya kan sendro nga ngil. Wasey, the committee acknowledges the current lack of expertise and experience within the management of PPUC. Nteksan madaglia PPUC as such nikbeda ngia isure PPUC for the many years especially atra house ma senetra aurele. They send mega flat statement like that. Emgenged ngal namani, and what you essence is saying is nganga labo andingil tangambo korrektetian. And that's impossible. Linga ngal namani labo mobentira ourestan member aboard. But no matter how much he knows about accounting, my expertise eda ngi aurele, which I highly acknowledge. The tial statements have put her in a situation where her fellow board member, ablesat tial report, ito wasey, oh, ngakorak mal special. Eda mamalirgi milngay indiakim special. Mang scary. Mang leganga official record olbi. So when you make a flat out statement like that, eh, your chances are going to cause negative feelings among the management of tial corporation, ma board of tial corporation. And in turn, eh, your expectation ada abol troi. Ak ti raise the same. Ling yiril sentence, yiril troi may sort of knock you on your feet. Sulak.
Senator Inabo.
Ay, Mr. President, kamsulang na tial al mutal um, malmasaula Senator Isal er sel konserner ngi. Ah, maldi emle isure kamame president, al adimla otobadiya recorder tial hearing. Ak ti swakal korra put that sentence into perspective. El wasey, ah, ah, kamiti amal dimilsaudra arala denki. Agimilsauder sel arala alu. El malle ngaraba banle 17 cents, edimle kilme 3.4 cents. El atol ngasar ngi mo 4 point 4.4 cents. Oy. Mang mwayang malle misel kloa draper tial arala alu ma konserner kamama wasey al al guk kalgabarul mas. Mang mwaya kimkorra amal no recognizeer sel sel up and down and mal dress diggers tial portionera arala denki el mora alu. Mang amle konserner kamama wasey, maybe sabel sel mechanism ra AFPA, sel Armadi fuel price adjustment. El parta tarifra PPUC. Ah, application eda ngi a dependra bebir angora economic factors, my inflation rate, ma world price of fuel. Mang with that background ra Ms. Alexander, emle handlel teiki del al tokoi el girila seter segi del arala alu. Eng sabel nasuwe ra PPUC. Mandiakal bulu ulil al bankrupt. Aborniak cas problems eda ngi. Wa isera lastir el belto da PC waset sorin modiklara bankruptsi ling lamodiaka audo eda ngi. Mang olugumta seter segi del arala alu lortia kar sel mechanism, ma ikiel forecast al ngaal sel. Nteka ldiplita akias resources ra PPUC. Wa el al time ya arala alu agiril 11 cents. Etira dika elektra 3 point, eh, 3.4 cents. Mas segi dal difference away al bulu ulil bol bolakaudo drap PPUC, leng mangka drangaraba aral alu. Emru ngonge dika elektra tarif mal ngariol compared morsil actual aralu. Mas seeda malle konsernera kamiti, Mr. President, tamanegiram al mutal expand eda ngi. Tiang al waset tiang malde konserner sel tarifra alu. El that has brought PPUC to its knees, leng waseng yaaudo. El al sugum takantinyul kalektra mal gegraye peramal klo, eka dal mutal mo face rausi sewal cas flow problem. Ma kimal appreciator segi del expertise ra Ms. Alexander. El nganiya experience eda ngi, emlangara training, el giril segi del AFPA fuel price mechanism, el parta tarifra PC. Mal bol sabel el mo dyaka kotru ikiel korakas flow problems ra PPUC. Makmal understander sel konsernera Senator Isal imal agree. Edi, ing manegiram al mutal mo talhibal ditel, waseng ra amle konserner segi del one specificel sentence. Mahamsulange, Mr. President, tak ti swakal clarify se malmasaula.
Senator Isal.
Legasulila chair lady malmla mursmodi, vice chairman of committee, chairman of vice meetings. El madam mursmodi mo bertacl, mang swakal dimo close statement tial, wasey madang clear. El diakal management ra PP issue by board of directors ra PPUC issue. Seeda la bay bertacl. Le tial sentence wasey dam laga expertise ma management ra PPUC. Oh, let me repeat the sentence, wasey the committee acknowledged the current lack of expertise and experience within the management. Bega na, malsaudra management were as a justification, a vice chairman of committee wasey. Eng ngakamora board, ndiakal booram management. Mang bay adrap board al awul kmatcens tira, that was the weakness. Seeda bay giril accept eda ngi, eka sin true fact. Ni management ra PPUC abtogar adangari. Nteka nasin digan personala mokni, accountinga tiramokni. Ngera dira Philippine, dongra adra CFO tiramokni. Mang gedogaravi make ra blank statement, ni mannamo ngila. Abaishe, chairman of justifying ngi, li gumeser ngi amle labor. Seeda ulaksa support bangan namani, eh, I know she has the expertise. And the agenda of management is only as good as the board. Sulanga, Mr. President.
Sulange, Senator Senator Agitaya.
Sal, Mr. President, tamal sawla atnaqlis aler no oh, clarify tial edel, nte trigibel short silent sentence, komiti rau ngil oloyang. Ni mural wasil bel tramsaud ringa atakal Inabol girila segi dal korra adabikri ngi ya kamiti il girila management mo orotel a PC in general. Resel tarabui le edabong umutul wasey 17 cents aran. Yatal tarab meeting edabong dikul drapel motris cents. El mutal ma agolongaselim mo 14 cents. Segi dal biki kri ngi ya kamiti. Mang seeda amle litutul komiti amle assertenerik mungari. Ma nomineea do balbongel teka dinmil tangambo korrektetian. Gilel bolse bel contribute un mora bloktak resolution accounting issues er gidra PC. Kumsaula, Mr. President.
Sulange, Senator Agitaya. Ngariya ngodo. Sugum ndigang etirgen rogu ilgo ngi tial standing committee report 11-20. Giril Jacqueline Alexander du oy. Ontok. Namay. Floor Lider.
President, edamor senexel report, madam mo medava adaptra standing committee report 11-21. Tiang agiril sel Senate Resolution 11-24.
Seeda motionu namdu ngeseq. Clergam iwet resolution.
Senate Resolution number 11-24. A Senate Resolution confirming the presidential appointment of Mr. Terrence Rulud to serve as a member of the Board of Trustees of the Social Security Administration for a term of four years. The Senate Resolution 11-24 amalaira omalkela president, el Mr. Terrence Rulud el moada labor of trustees of Social Security Administration al kalsela ewal rak.
Floor Lider. Don tira chair la committee, mal maskita report. Senator Inabo.
Mr. President, ta tara membera kamiti, Senator Sangabao mo maskita report. Sulanga Senator Sangabao.
Senator Sangabao.
Sal, Mr. President, wilitasil sinmera. Arvekal senators. Kamiti rau ra ways and means and financial matter, nga ra iungela leader sibra chairperson Inabo, ma vice chair Isal. Eblema asana Senate Resolution 11-24. Amlo mutmokraurele giril la confirmation ra presidential appointment, ra Mr. Terrence Rulud el mosur membera board of trustees, era Social Security Administration el mora term ewal rak. Ma kamiti, Mr. President, tamlo omesera resume ra Mr. Rulud. Emlo tigaringi kwasengal Mr. Rulud, ngila bachelor's degree ngi ra business administration, University of Hawaii. Ki lo, era raga ra 1992. Aurior al tobras school, leng leritun el mer belaw. Ulmo ullo aurior ra Social Security Administration, emne odit and compliance officer. Tial urelela, edirekal mal emlo otia klol kigengar ngi, ma experience ngil giril tial Social Security Administration. El al time ya Mr. Rulud, private business, el ora el orutab togal shovayra al sela blur belaw. Ah, kamiti, Mr. President, arka edirekal bolse el sendra questionnaire el mora Mr. Rulud. Emlo se el guk hensie ikiel togal questionsel ngi amne solaga mitil momdingi. Tar ngia edirekal ulaiso sendiaga koramedi gal, ma physical condition eda ngi, wal limita ability ngi, mosel kutmoklaurele. El member aboard tial ala. Edirekal loaisi kwasengadiya al membera ngidil board, malung adoriti, malubing enti organization, al sela blur belaw. Ediaga business, el ngi ulung mosel posa conflict of interest eda ngi, under a good of ethics acta. Edirega Mr. Rulud, ulaisa kamiti kwaseng mal madangalia ngaralit tial Social Security Administration. Eh, mal mal somaryar el mo member tial board. Omrankmaset tiangasi el tial SS administration programa mal se el mosutriarab togal adel tira el al time, ma mal abul el uspe anesu. Toguni tiri nganiya disability tiri. Edirekal maluaisi kwasesegi dal nga ra Social Security. Eng mal ngilak togal experience, ngi al omrank kwaseng mo help ringi ra sel guk mongal alil ngi mo adra board. Eh, mal omesek kwasaya koto klo tutelil, sel long term sustainability, malubung tial droolele tial SS program, el helper ader belaw. Sera March 25, eh, Mr. President, ya kamiti amlo utmakla hearing lubangila Mr. Rulud. Emla ngiar togal members sel attend eda ngi, including, of course, a chairperson Inabo, ma vice chair Isal. Barbebir our senator sel tira member tial kamiti. Eh, amalle tme arugula kamiti, nosel edirekal Mr. Rulud, el guk stress bebir atokoi lo omrank kwaseng se el mo help tial program ra Social Security. Ataringi, Mr. President, tagari seal konsernel giril la penalty, sel sugum qadamomiudel haro SS. Etiangara al time, mang mallo stress kwasey oldo nga ra landing mosel orulubangila board, emo recommend el mer olbira kulu la, ol giril kwaseng magarasal dal sumaklit tiang. Mandiakal sal mo kol boarden el mora shovay ma ardestala. Edirekal ngariya konserne, Mr. President, tel giril la kwasetanga ngi tiri el emla aurior, emla retire, al adrangod, al bulu nga belaw. El waldil nga belaw, el al time, bigoseng towal longor ir tial Social Security tiri. Mang tadekal ne express bebir a members kwaselil se edel omesera ati al, el mosel edel ndulia some form of payout. Eh, bol si il tira gal return, el guk malagantel mora blurir. El nguselududir, el bomel guk hensio eda ngi ra restraqla ngartil nga raga blurir. Malme pointad kwaset tiang malungil undas. Mal sugum mongal togat el mangay, mosel omeset tial edel.
...
The only time eh, ah, I'm so is about the arbitration since we ma, contract that there are going to say the arbitration closer me, my little bit to go with my senior. I'm going to go with the commercial arbitration, I think I believe this is para, I think I believe this is bringing a month there, ah, the new amo, or a gang here, me at the aura, utama, at the aura traditional issue, uh, sugar. I get a traditional title, the new ah, malora ti tolo meso there, and they are malarbitrators, my little bit expert, the movie, I'll allow them to get here again, give it to her below. So, I'm going to go, ah, I'm going to tell you the mola, and go till more, ah, go, go, go till more, ah, blue, ah, that must be below, ah, business, business friendly environment. And there is, and there is a, well, I believe, as international, international arbitral center, I believe in the ised, ah, more international business community. I'm going to tell you the regular, no, but they're going to, ah, I got, now, I'm regular, say, say, rock. Yeah, national government, ah, let me ring low roll, messu, when, malasamal, meroder, ah, the aura international commercial arbitration, the more, the old below. Mr. Afolera, twenty nineteen, yeah, our terrible expert, clear, ah, Mr. Gary Brown, ma, Mr. Daniel Melzer. I'm there below, logiwa, yes, or Asian Development Bank. And below, I see, all is aqua, come back, I'm tele, 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 the international, ah, bit, commercial arbitration. And most of sure, ah, our leaders are below, but, ah, I could, the gilling era, ah, the more parry, and more take it, the New York Convention on Recognition and Enforcement of Foreign Arbitra, Arbitral Awards. El angin, um, minist, ah, I'm going minister of finance, and, eh, al time, I'm going to do, I'm going to amle,
Sabedel ngusel mo arbitration. Nagitamtingala sa decisiona arbitration, at akasi edel ngul mora court. Gire edel honor rangisil wantsil decide. Makti swakabol clear lwa sing tiyala amkaral handle a commercial agreement. Tel invol balis ra utam transfer ra utam masable samai gerowu ilgukaramut mur seegid. Seegid ya a concerner nga makati swakal state ringiye ya chairman akongel wa sayal sumanriya turdu ding floor amendmenteng asavayel ma enting tiyaku dangel ndak adrala makmo agiral adrala i am sulang i Mr. President.
Senator Aldabeel.
Malungil say point ra taqalin aboam Mr. President. Eh sabedel diregal wa kainsoel mo mesra ah possible amendment. Tel mutu mkataklisi egid lwa al concern. Di eng girel mo blaktaq tiyala diregal kuna sing tiyala arbitration option. Wal option malsum gawa omdas kuna sing ovum ngusper arbitration enmumsawada ma dispute rau. Eng mo itu ta position rau. Eh sabemel ndiakam chusel mur seegid arbitration edi mel mol mel ngara egal traditional process. Ah diregal tara ah provision el dabtigringiya alse tiyanga kuna sing in the event eh arbitral award da oabol court sa beel set asideerni alsum mbitigri kuna sing tiyanga mo conflict ni manganiil policy. Malsum gawa oldosia utam el dimla kalaua ka malmalta rolel. Ya court amnom tigirik kuna sing gel parir lel darsa tiyala utama dimla kalau oldiraqta malmalta rolel mnoa oabol conflict ra nganiil liula tabadalela utam. Eh sabel la court el moniaki sabel wal set aside malubeng modyakal honor seegid l award eng madrura akuka normal court proceedings. Seegi agigida babyra optionsen sa sabedel ngusper kada resolve agigida lwa oabol conflict.
Senator Sobao.
Um sulap Presidentan ndiakak Senator Inabouam no koru sayidil questionel girela akwaset agadekal girel ndiakal sa edel challenge sa sel final. Eh di nganiya agigida babyra issuesil diregal melarakla ulma akwasen malsumu tiyank sa beedel nganiya teel edel dirga mutu lmo sawaderni. Me simkramla osisa questiona rau among agigida chairman Aldabeel amla henjirngi Mr. President. Sulak.
Senator Isah.
Akka reelsra. Aplo rireli liberal tiyala malgora unique. Unique way eh report tiyali porta torbelau mostli. Omdas aban ninety percenta torbelau. Oh gratulate teringi la gu mesengaria resolution deplor toverniya babyra delegates through chairman tabloalgora amondisia torbelau. Ah oreng seringi malado oreng seringi blokotorbelau. Iwa emuiwrit tiyala toramri gel. Egal gregi akwala dibor toramri gel. Agote ensel page two ra tiyadi porta sel last paragraph, eh sel next to the last omu erse sentence sa sel International Commercial Arbitration Act of twenty twenty one emuiwur ngil mo. Sel gubuibeset chairman eh tiyagida gregi lpage seegid l hold paragraph. Akora mo omu awdasa loasi tiyala arbitration, tiyala commercial arbitration law abo de la abur belau. Tiyanga. Tiyanga agirel koteng nganiya agreement. Girel moniya agreement ras sing radonrela shobai belau ma outside. Ya uer monisil agreement eh we di nganiya nganiya a business relationship. May sing nganiya adra ondoblur meledes se longira utam eh moktorajotin. Sel lebo arbitration, commercial arbitration, sel bo larbitration, sel moatet arbitration, and they have to look at the contract first. Eh seya dekal rurela arbitration. Seu rurela alue lo mesha kantakta si tiyans sabel mur arbitration ndiak. Pursuant to law. Seegid elanga hu mesringi tiyanga basicling dim sata teal. Akon balir belau ma kon balir outside. El moniya dispute rir purse went to the contract. Eh diakal bo ragon esatsin like in the past devaimon arbitration eh iron out the differences. I hope I'm correct as sumusem. Si that is the order great. Is that the way we're going? Ya ongeru nga ngasil next sentence after seegid l paragraph sel sel last paragraph tiyala page two. La akwaset a new division includes provision providing guidance to palawan courts about how they should recognize arbitration agreement. Magari akmulwa si ongerulge tiyang ma aku moniya additional responsibility mora court abur belau. Legorta akorte belau ala deka expertise ringiela al time logiwa chases ta tora arbitration or do they have? Makmuiwurse kora ukmo omdas aset tiyang agirel nganiya ukora ama obisil within the court system enmoteke seegid. The provision absolute magort. Amos akorte belau apalo usper ringi. The more recognized arbitration agreement or enforce arbitral awards. Iya agid akora ditul gregi. Sel kotegri akwaset tiyang tiyang understood loasi arbitration is only gonna be after there is a dispute. Malubeng uer almoniya agreement tekelem lamshat tiyalo shobai mitiya relationship aseng ra involve bungi. Eh sumanriya utam eh maybe das doesn't qualify for arbitration.
Sulak. Senator Aldabeel.
President akulasamel eh ensir sel garela taqaisal. Agote tiyala arbitration process ah awal beskidha option ra adel adel parira agreement. El chus kuna sing alsum mmoniya dispute rir. In the future alsum mtiyala business relationship rir amoniya ora disagreement teringi temu dispute certain aspect sa sel businesses rir. Eh magaral ngaral ra malubeng ngaral dongul usper ngil mo oh wal lo mes malubeng seerel agigida dispute rir. Ah sel traditional method ah madrura court ya court ta omi ringi. Eh tiyagid l arbitration process ah akual tara option eh the more selector, more expert eh memrogon e tiriyi amo omesra agir language ra agreement tamai gerowu. Ngaral sa l agreement temrogon e etir amo mi tiyala mondai. Emrogon e decide eh seegid l decision rir l domogodongri kuna sing award seegida oabol final decision eh tir gel paris seegid l mori honor ringi. Mang seedel omesringi lwa eh tiyale tiyalingi ra gamlimente al grievance panel. Eh la employees ra gamlimente l bo nganiya kora ah mo mistreated malubeng mo feel like they're being mistreated. Eh sabel eh mo request seegid l grievance panel eh moringi tirigid l oabol adala panel emelma betut ke emrogon e tirigid l neutral el adel dekal dekal eh emrogon e tirigid amomese sel gayse ngel employee. Emrogon e eh sabel decided kuna sing ngal employer malubeng adel me mistretra employee in right on the room. Eh and that's the process that stand wa outside ra court. Seegid l option eh rogu international companies sel bo lag eh etosigir sel wabol mrede yasu el tele talen sabel mrede l resolve dispute rir. Ma ulm tiyagid l process arbitration ah kam kam into place ah wa laba provide seegid l option. Mang sel bo dangokl tabloal paris sel draw up a contractor rir. Eh sabel decide among themselves kuna sing alsum ma traklab se etamo nganiya kora disagreement teringi malubeng dispute. Eng ral process abodol tirakerni arbitration alubekatamora court. And they can choose eh one of them. It's eh like I said, sel reporteng palenteri eh diregal. Mang sabel right up ringi. Malubeng sabel dekal right up ringi na eh agigida le eh sel agreement rir. Eh di sel bo alhappen dispute. Eh sabel agree kuna sing me the resolve dispute rir through arbitration process. Malubet the mora court. And then both parties have to agree ra hold sel take places seegid.
Diga. Senator Rudim.
President akwansauli, margili tasids. Eh President akwadi ukmoso akitna nomalak longturi olbirak lula sing ra omuk timla kalpas longturi olbirak. Musing potalang sa sing ukmanriya porsona among rale. Ya swakal confirm eh chairman Aldabeel eh tiyale tamderiwa si tiyala oldasun mola lamautokon repeatun asing optional. Mora paris sel mo involved. Ya kurenisala kamuksa sing optional eh voluntary. Adal mosoyisur ngiya voluntary tusoyisur ngi. Meratir da President tamukol reservationona katiyala oldasun mola. Imundong togora abur la adel. Le tiyanga girel se uklastel olbirin. Adal me present ringa sing nganiya consideration of arbitrators enmutmage ta kuraset raplay in field el mula gimel. Ra togora arbitration. Merasil omdolo aseng kariport ringi la sing optional eh voluntary voluntary. Mang sel swam el torbelau. Ngaral ul mangsel swam isalso ra gil private party. Ekamamru ringi mola. El momose sa adel mutmura alsel. Seya me reservationona ra longturi olbirak lula ma ulma knumudetengi ratiyagid l oldasun mola. Imundong la gimela international magit ra togora shobai. Di sel bamshisun me soyisur republic of Palawa motutyala. El mo effect la traditional laws malubeng cultural laws ma uk environment travel belau agir blar racea babyra Senator. Sen deni mo concern. Ma kamle ukwasi akamitil blotspe mes agigida address agigida. Le tradivaita ulm longa mlo daglorara ulal akunasen sumon optional. Ngaramka ma amalela regil obala. Ya alsum optional nganiya constitution malagla tamra contract law. Ma adel ngara private sector ah freely choose mosoyisun malubeng freely choose daal bo sesu bo. Dahmutel question wa si ngaramka amalshisur tiyang amamlela ringi mola. Eh create ra tara playing field ri riakragal giri abur belau. El moso bo era adel deka malexpert risir rir malubeng krambadengi rir agigida togora international law. Armeyda malubeng ar seegid ukutara hurande. Le dekal lo otra PNC abur belau malulul belau. Seh di bakramderingi ma ulmakting se egal concerna togora PUC. Se bo sala egal loan. Eh tumdaringa world members tumde raise the concern ah arbitration clause ra agigida la PUC. Abolo la loan. Eh tumlo divaita drogilo aseng mora Singapore adang merbelau. Mutel tang tiyagal adel menut consideration of arbitrators. Mu lo aseng sumonriya mondai. Eh tumora kunkaskele abur amri gel. Ma trabli raisa ngiya questiona kana omregan longotriwa aseng. Omutela kos tringi against ada ngarbelau. Le sing government taminvol buringi lega damla grant eh engage with the private sector international nganiya ability timra mklor project. Eh agigida mo question. Akwadi mo questioni Mr. President asel sumon optional in sel swam. Ngaramka amamru sel swam el maltogora la amka madele sel swam. Eh of course nganiya togora la ma contract law. Agir rogu sel soma ngaseltiyan. Asel swala adel mo ngaradrala ringi. Eh mosan ra contractor ma adel ngarauchaider may are protected by that contractor. Le tiyala abur bela abur ala nganiya luul protect ra investor. Eh protect ra adel noitau dudel. Protect ra abur girel girel wal benefit sel projecten moniya belau. Seegid l Mr. President. Alsum optional menggirel free market. Ngaral ulma amaltau tringi mred mningi obala. Sulak Mr. President.
Sulak Mr. Senator Rudim. Senator Kwartey.
Sulap Presidenta teale, malungili tasids laga rau marugul senators. Diregal swal mora sel kamitiri porter sel page two. I'm sorry, not page two. Page four of six. Margi seegid l underline ngari sel togoil wase double involve ah omdas sel utam ablazodi ya kora amnaria questiona. Ah tankal Senator Inabou. Ni akumosa rsel kora traditional issues. Le ngorangariya assumption el wasa business contract may not involve traditional issues. Pokteli tratsir malbon ngariya teel edel rau eral lutel mral tiyala laal forward eh di bot botse ngariya teel edel omeser sel kuk international agreement and traditional knowledge. El wase it's actually a form or inventorship. Mar adel belau alsum nganiya gel kuk tingir modeli del toli may eh tiramo malo osiris lwayal blel invent. Ya la nganiya adel mo usper low business. Eh girel omdasindiregal girel de lo mes luskele girel mor arbitration. Ngariya atelir mor arbitration alsum nganiya problem asing. Makti ol nitra chair ma bozberel bo nganiya de kora discussionen girel seegid l indiregal tara international ah organization eh nganiya agid le international agreement telo tirakerni. Ya omdas agil inventorship traditional knowledge. Sumon kokiara adel bela girel bo nganiya obisim or girel ngariya teel edel mora arbitration. Sulak.
Sulak Mr. Senator Kwartey. Senator Sobao.
Sulang i Mr. President. Eh diregal di clarification eh che ak understand ra wanara point tiyala arbitration eh maybe ngoramo osisungima kalulokongiya Senator Rudim akwasing ndiakal bo publik agil discussion omu. Eh di sel sumon mo publik eh blamulosisur birala al gida amru ringi. Eh kukma malarakla babyra togoil nganiya louduk akwasi arugul togora gamlimenta girel mora open government act. Musegid l omdasindiregal ah point eh maybe alsum kuktimde tiyemra kau matara ah. Eh ngal ngara ikrela hurande solringi. Di sel blabemtur alsela hurandel gida namong nganiya agil ul constitution abur belau meti al alla. Igalel kukel bol inganflikta bingi le agil babyra bladakatmo kala akwasing. Ndia nganiya lameltigel mombedengi alsum kamlame soisur tiyama. Eh baby agigida kora mo utus seegid diregal dili asel Senator Kwartey akwasi didi clarify maloral eh di akbal support ra egan akwasing kuktrate al musela paris sel invol buringi. Sulak Chair.
Senator Aldabeel.
Oh man sawtiral eh la madadu Senator semal maklotutelagel point eh blar racea Mr. President omila dabakataq man adel mol mel mora ah amalur tiyara second madurid la omgulel posibel ngil cloadel marbikla. Agote sel concern ra taqal Rudim ah away sing. Hmm sel ngal sel sel eh convention ra New York Convention eh wal diregal lwa nganiya sel lwa kora ah ndiakal require agid l abur ala. Ding ulaseng momo mosmisi ea droo lela abur. El mo parir tiyagid l convention. Alsum maturuli ah legislative ah framework rir mo katakla otutel tiyala togora alsum mhopen alselab abur belau. Le asel di implementa program ra alselab lume. Malubeng alsela gamlimente leka kora legislative malubeng kaidans ra court la lowkabaringi eh supervise malubeng omesra implementation eh seegid l tele tal. Mang away sing wal chusel chusel option ra clients malubet paris eh chus kuna sing temo soril chus arbitration alubet sel soril chus traditional ah judiciary process. Eh ding girel nganiya gaedlan se logiwa la. El court ta dorongi emrogon e wal go supervise malubeng omesa implementation eh seegid program malubeng process. Eh with absence of such eh eng oabol sabel create ah ah almutel maringil mondai malubeng modyakal sawadel mondai ra alsuman adam ah olaba mandaringil mede mandet kuna sing. We want to go through the arbitration process. Se la ka seegid l karbilala al kaidra adel mo soisupra agigida togoi. Agil concern ra ah taqal Kwartey ah malmaklotutel point ta kamitiri diregal mremlo mes agigida ling. Nganiya agigida lwa waa traditional knowledge. El ngiya wal beratalira ber adelstal adel belau ah ku eksempora togora gar. Agil traditional medicine. Eh alsum ma nganiya let's say pharmaceutical company ngar outside eh swal engage lobongela adel belau already nganiya knowledge ringi ra particular medicine. Eh sabel rulya contractor rir. Eh sel contractor rir mo specific kuna sing. Eh agigida ma agigida mo gorbila business partnership rigid. Eh ding protect sel interest ngel adel belau ngal sel se mengmo partra agreement rir. Ya eh only then emrogon eh sabel diregal tiyagid l arbitration process ah diregal sumto chus kuna sing. Alsum mka demo dispute ra in the future ngoniya dispute rir gida ra tiyala contractor gida. Igada usper tiyala arbitration process malubeng kada madrura court. Eh sabel diregal mkataklisi egid l close ra alsela contractor rir. Mang tiyanga in a way tir gel arbitrators sel bo omeser sel tede omesringi mningi kuna sing. Eh agigida agil closer ra contractor eh blakataq ngartak kuna sing girel protector ra kuma agir protect malubeng ndiakal se emlebaro rir tiyala knowledge ngal adel belau. El ngulme make up profit rir. Therefore eh sel bo deliberate malubet kodrura process lo mi tiyala mondai. Eh sabel lultu ra agigida ngaral sela contractor emrogon omi ringi. Eh in a way eh seegid ya omesindra maklolkom bali ah soril chus seegid arbitration process. Hmm ah understand eh agil concern ra ah taqal Rudim kuna sing ngaramka da wado letrigida ra logiwa usperala al letrigida mo oh wal create ra additional regime ra togora la. Eh ding close tutelil nganiya away tiyagid l sumka de expect abur belau. El lamu partra global business community. Eh nganiya agid l togora trade ma togora business agreement eh girel de lo soisur alsel. Eh la ka away agigida l option available to us eh rulidil diregal momringi. Eh resolve problem rigida alsum arise ra future. Akora di omi ah omeset tiyala dirgal nomregal design use l BS franchise agreement eh belsani nganiya surangl sel T company la blotaiva. Seegid l classical example agreement eh tamosan agreement eh emrogon e sendel alsel seegid agreement rir sabel eh decide kuna sing. Alsum moniya dispute malubeng in the future moniya problem eh egada magarabod resolve agigida dispute. Eh alsum mtogoi kuna sing temo usper arbitration process eh telo liaclos ra alsel kuna sing tiyagida mo oh resolve a problem rigid. Alsum kukteakal gengi madrura osisur process ra court.
Senator Isah.
Sulak Chairman Ramara, akamitira eh banking and investment and financial matters. Akugir tiyalgir l kuravi kuramo mumdanlela asing tiyanga labo de la eh ngarayin fact tringi. Eh tiyak mo mola the way it is. Eh eh eng di mo applicable after abo agil shobai mo usper tiyang almoniya dispute eh mora commercial arbitration. Di mo muerseegid l time abur la tiyala going forward. Na tan sabela shobai contract lukutna du para uer abur la tiyala egada main mo agir malmo ra commercial arbitration. Eh usper eksempora ah abelau. Kuna mbedengi ra si tuptokal adam langma atamir ninety nine years or series. Eh diakal may sa imol nomengisil utam gira project because financial and business rir nomakni. Eh egal utama alses. Tiyabora la. Eh sabel palawan city center eh se seegid l contract eh move tiyage singi mora arbitration. I know it takes an agreement. Eh di in the absence of arbitration eh asalutuklingi el adra ngoto abur. Melisa atamil enlam rale eh dekal utra deka science of him or her coming back. Eh di tiyakpungbongi seegid l yasu. Seegid l mosabel ngal adel belau mo tiyage singi for signing a ninety nine year list enamasi seraudod eh dekal shobai ya utam madaror gdi. For three, four generation. Magari akwaset tiyabora la eh sabel retroact. Adang di status seegid l since abor la eh effective para mo. Make it shobai. Eh mo soisur a business agreement after abor la tiyala.
Mr. Senator Aldabeel.
President sel garela taqlisala. Akumtabat tiyala ndiakal bo retroact. Eh ding agil business agreement eh malubeng contractor ah living document eh sabel alsum mta mola tiyang. Eh soril lolliara close sel mo edra close seegid l contractor existing contractor rir. Ah kuna sing etamo resolve dispute logiwa arbitration process. Eh sabel amend ra contractor rir emrogon lolliang. Eh sel only when they eh make the amendment eh lolliak seegid l close arbitration ra alsel. Eh ma sabel lo usper tiyala alsum moniya. Di ndiakal sabel omdasindirka seegid retroact eh mo resolve amnamoregal problem ra malubeng namoregal dispute. Seegid l omdasindirka se edel rolin. Di agil future dispute alsum ta agree kuna sing temo usper tiyala process eh sabel.
Senator Isah.
So let me ask another question. Malsum ma company A belau ya company B outside a foreigner company eh tiyamola ra lugu eh tirage tirasat negosieri ra business rir. Do they must adhere immortial arbitration law or that is silent until such time nganiya issue?
Yeah, omdasind it's really up to the parties. Alsum mta expect dispute ra in the future. Eh ganga wadil wadil provide ra option ra business parties eh most of it will govern themselves alsum moniya a problem ra in the future. Mang ndiakal necessary eh compliance mortial la leng tiya like we say optional for them.
Is proven. Akna am understand ra point. Diakal askanil akwasin tiyabora la. Eh wo motara option agal company A belau ma company B ra outside. Eh tala la el madele engage sa temu usper ringi. Se can always go to it. Seegid elanga point swal il drive to. Eh desan ra contractor nga ka company A ngariya atamel, company B ra outside amit join tedulia ongel hotera ngarbeed. Sel desan sel contractor desan eh bo etela namola. May sing eh company may after the law is enacted. Nganiya contractor rir eh in business. Tiyabora la eh nganiya wal fallback rir mo usper ringi. But they necessarily must have it in their contract to use it. Da wale las shobai. Seegid l gregi. Akwasi when tiyabora la when does two party or one party here and there utilize this law? Mobiltin ra contractor rir. Adang it's there that they can utilize it in the future time almoniya issue rir. Seegid l akora swal clear.
Omdasind Mr. President, omila bo blakataq tiyadekal mande tori rogu contractor di multirakerni. Mang alsum mola tiyang eh agil existing contractor alsum mtsoril mo usper tiyagid l process. Eh girel amend eh agil agreement rir el moniisil close arbitration ra alsel. Alse guman, diakal amend, agel, eh, albo ngi dispute tir, eh, sebi il, eh, al, al happen sel dispute, and sebi il, kad du, eh, nasay, alse guma ngamoniya monday, me bod usper tiel arbitration process, alse guma agel tablo, partya goongei, eh, nasay, me bod usper te, instead of moragort, eh, and, and, sebi el motogo, tamusper se gil arbitration. Tiadi open, eh, option for, ah, adal shobai, el mo sois bra, waite gaidil process, alse guman toko ngi, nde akal sebi il, emol party goongea, emo ala, ke, eh, bel toko.
Kamepai, the clarify ra question, tiel la, abola la, let's say, mola ra, luguk, nganiya effect ringi ra agel already existing contract.
Diakal, effect ringi ra agel existing.
She, agel de clarifyingi, leng, ala, ader lir, ela, ngin diakal sebi el, mo, malala agel already existing contract, eh, provide eh, alse guman sol, alse guman tiel la, mola ra luguk, eh, ngia, already agel existing el contract, eh, al so ri, mo partner tiel arbitration, et mo amend gantrakt tir, el mo for under tiel arbitration la, alse guma mola, nde akal sebi el mo affect agel already existing la.
Senator Rudim.
Madam Sol, eh, Mister President, eh, Mister President, taktil mutal di, eh, reiterate ra concern, ala, chairman, usper ato, lo sing, diakal mandatory, in response to Senator Rudi, optional, eh, voluntary, diak morim, lo logiwa, adipri kringi, Mister President, sel guma mola, eh, la sel bomomeset tiel, dalavil, Mister General Report, eh, alse guma, paris, samodek, sebi il, se gil arbitrator, eng mo require Palau Supreme Court to mobilit tra arbitrator. Esela dono, do do, lo bongela, engel ader, Mister President, regel professional arbitrator sa, aso, eh, man mota gay. Nditi tiang, eh, chairman, ra committee, alse guma, gumla, momakngara, ra Palau Supreme Court, em mobilit tra arbitrator, mo sois bra, guknoth, el hurang, guknoth, agi mir ngi. Sel, la, dalangi, al daria, tagal Senator Rudi, ala, madam Sol, ah, existing contracts, where esa chairman, akongas, nde akal mandatory, omesindra arbitration contract, aga optional, and dimo yo ra, agel paris, lo asay, agi, eh, mo sois bra, tiang, nde, ati omreli, ngal bo, blangit, ah, agel blamudung raula, esel bomomes, eh, gal contractor, most sebi el mo case by case basis, contractor per contractor, alse guma, mkloula, agaun, tamalu mkloula, amount, tamo require international companies, em, sinz, baringi, ndeak, or rim ra, adas, em, sinz, baringi, mong free market, akti, mo begi karingi, Mister President, alse guma, gadrulil mola, eh, ma, omakngara, ra Palau Supreme Court, eh, akti, kro, ni ta committee, asa, alse guman, nde akal ma amend tir, el ma amend tir, asa, tiang mo, sumsois bra, Palau Supreme Court, nde kringi, most sebi el mola, eh, bela, agal gregil gide, blu belaol. Le tir, mlamu sois, guknoth, ah, erosion procedures of private contracts, arbitration law, akti, malakor se gaidil, swad protect, esel objectivity, ma blind justice, blu belaol, aseng girel tausul, osiyan marara, ulti ra kralla, ala, guk business law, guknoth ra, ah, national law, national law, girel tausul, marbe kla, this, ah, Mr. President, lenga, gumtiga se gaidil, madam Sol, rap, ah, Palau Supreme Court, rap page seven, lenga ra paragraph twenty six, la, dangalangan, sel, ah, em, omesindra, agel juristic, dahmoba, akman, mo begi karingi, agel mutal, man, mo clarify, ten mo, Sol, Mister President.
Senator Inavo.
Um, Mister President, tauul, mang, um, girel nganiya la, ah, assebi el, logiwa la, eh, emo makngar aliya, kurt tergide, el wasay, kadam lamu, girel usper tiel arbitration, malse guma, mo diakal, mengilta, ah, arbitra, ah, tartegel mo arbitrators, ya kurt terbel aw, assebi el mo, omiltiya, immorti, eh, girel mengil tartede, ma, sel mengil tartede, ah, imo al, al appoint terngi, ah, tir gel bitang, ma imo, ah, appoint terngi, engal bitang, ma imo al, al appoint terngi, teru, et tir ga girel independent, eh, ngani, tir gel professional arbitrators, vice, lor gore, ngi, Senator Rudim, engel adas, er alme, lo, vice, ergid, eng wasay, tir ga expert, giri, mering la arri, mang, ndeak, tiel process, ah, diakal necessary, bayota aral process, anding, assebi el, maread, maread, el mo, merik tiel dispute, et tir ga expert, eh, agal urio, loruler wa, ah, makloula gantrakt. Ma, sel dorura gantrakt, eh, esel gukumes, ringi, ra bela, agel gantrakt, blakwes, eh, nganiya three options, ra kau, sebi em, emrulil, wasay, jurisdictional tiel gantrakt, abalur belaol. Embalgula, akmula, sel summa ngamoniya dispute, eng girel mo file, ah, a complaint, ra alse la kurt, ra blu belaol, eh, sebi el guk, asay, ah, jurisdictional tiel gantrakt, ah, Singapore, embalgula, akmula, sel summa ngamoniya dispute, eng girel mo ra kurt, ra Singapore, eh, g emla hapin, eh, et te gida mo ongaidil option, sebi em, even now, mang optional, wasay, alse guma ngamoniya dispute, eng mo ra arbitration, logiwa, angaral arbitration, eh, te gaidil arbitration, amora New York, mong, eh, garowa, girel specify, ra alse la gantrakt, mong, ah, sel, me, esebakrengar ngak, awa say, sel bodolil tartegel gaidil arbitrators, eh, edo sao, dara, ah, ut ma ra alse la blu belaol, masyuwa, aral blu belaol, eh, se gida, et tir ma mengil tar, adal, diakal, eh, maybe, makaran, kadu do, waseng girel, madenge siuwa, eh, ma, alse guma, tir ga, tiel outside, del gombaliya, wasay, um, advantage ter tir, al muwa, tar, adal, odangalil, ngara outside, eh, may, um, sebi el, man, mo neutral tiel decision, le, ul, makadamur, tiel arbitration process, ah, baby, let tabge, kel, wasay, kurt terbel, ah, gukmalola, balmar, arad, bela, mo, mo, diakal neutral la decision, ma ul, mat, ta, wasay, adra, little arbitration process, em, mo, mo, ngi, eh, kadha mo more business friendly, mo betoka, gombaliya, sorol mil, et, madenge, lo, asay, albo ngi dispute, eng neutral la decision, ah, arbitration, ma, ah, um dasen, cloud trel, la, al nganiya la, al provide the guidelines, alse guma, kadha goonger, kadam lamu goonger, ten New York Convention, arbitration, emeronge, mo implement, ringi, ah, the, muta state, esel concern, ala, wasay, alse guma, um, dispute, ay, involve ba ut ma, blu belaol, and maybe, ngamoniya special language, sel waseng guk, makaran, aga gaidil, kadi, appoint, ra, adal nga, alse belaol, madenge, siuwa, arbel, ah, expert, ra, ah, ut ma, bela, or, ta, dar la, ra blu belaol, al madenge, la, ra, abalur belaol, girela, atletela, ut ma, ma, ndi se gida, concern, ala, ndi gumdas, wala, cloud trel, eh, Mister President, Sol.
Ndang, pal clear, mengi di, make sure, agel concern, lo, gmu amorala, lekort, ta dimo interpret, alla, diakal bolol, amend, tiel la, malu be, bolorul, ul tiang, dimo interpret, agel gmu, lo, ara, alse tiel la, bod ngi, Senator Rudim.
Madam Sol, eh, Mister President, eh, swak, di help, prak, do, mong, kadha, amo create ra confusion, eh, Mister President, ndi guma, mal, mal, um dasen, mal, gataut, to, om, giedrol ti ra, klan, se gida, Mister President, ah, wadu concern, sel, om real, mola, al makni, tamalu ngi, lenga la, em, giedrol ti ra, klingi, se, exactly, the point, point of last, mulgore, em, gumla, du li, kesel, omreli, malpas, mulbola, ndeak, a choice, ngedrol ti ra, klingi, diak, mo, atala, makloula, adal, um, ra, em, olase, sometimes, la, amade, ya, malamal, taltoko, amade, gumblu, malamal, taltoko, da, kolti ra, krala, ndeak, salu ngi, la, la, malta. Mong, akti, malakol, regel, Mister President, la, agal, mlamudung, torgor, raula, amal, blataku, wasay, arbitration, ah, optional, ah, chairman, aldebey, la, mlamu, du li, tiel, gong, franchise agreement, em, ne, optional, ra adal, mo, sain, ringi, mo exclusive agreement, em, bela, dimla, usper tiel la. Akti, malgore, Mister President, asa, adra, blu, lo, rengs, olodek, mesit, tiel, ul dasun, mola, ah, voluntarily, optional, ndeakal mandatory, malse, to simplify these things, eh, dim, blalala, lo, aseng, agi, di, om, gatak, ra, la, multiu, la, adra, blu, kwa, aseng, sel somiu, al somiu, komsois, baringi, halat, timi, ndeak, di, wasel, di wait, ra, otpe, la, ninety nine years, al somiu, komu, di six months, malu be, komu, mo ninety nine years, mong same thing, dim, blin, mo optional, mal, plus, malu be, minus, Sol, Mister President.
Diakal, mal, understand, eh, malu ngi, la discussion, akti, wasen, diakam, edunga committee report, badbora, dalavil, il lut, malmo, ngil, discussion, eh, nganiya amendment, ra, ah, discussion, regidra, second reading, edo, rule, amendment, trigid, el mora, do reading, kabonge.
Since, sel, mola, amendment, ra, do, reading, men, di, di, usper, one minute, mut, di, ask, two minutes, di, ngara discussion, eh, edbora, sel, reading, eh, di, du, eh, ngaga, amal, di, usper, amal, di, mut, clarification, ah, chairman, eh, mal simple, ma, mo, e, rap page two, ti, report, sel last, paragraf, eh, mulu, asay, second, the new division includes provisions, providing guidance to Palau courts, about how should, how they should recognize arbitration agreements and enforce arbitrary awards, magali, ah, simple, when does arbitration agreement signed by the parties? Tiang toko, oing ra, tiang toko, ra, while they're negotiating the contract, adhan, toko, after they have signed the contract, em, go, guktara, gantrakt, kasi, eh, tiida, arbitration agreement, em, madel, in case you have issue, we're gonna go arbitration, se gida, ah, dig, simple as that, when does the agreement, arbitration agreement be done? Gatmo, kro, la, awa, il, adal, shobai, belaol, ader bela, shobai, ma, adra outside, when is that, sing, gatmo, kro, oing ra?
Ah, tul rol, eh, agot, eh, and sebi el, liak, arbitration agreement, tamgatmo, ra damulila, tul paris, malu be, sel, gantrakt, tiel, rogil, business partnership, malu be, wherever, ah, arrangement, business arrangement, el, assist, ra alse, et, so, so, sebi, a close, ra alse, sel, se gaidil agreement, eh, nasay, ah, arbitration, ah, agreement will be a means of our dispute in event, em, happen, ra future.
Mister President, madam Sol, ah, tiel, ngel, last, two minutes, namu, diak, ah, dig, yes, 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 all the way.
Shabem, er, nut, malmol, may give you time, Senator Korte.
Sol, eh, President, koming, mutung, rual, di, gumdas, ra kort, ra, bela, diakal, recognize ra, value, ra arbitration, ah, ul, msel, bo ngi, monday, et wasay, moral, mor se gaidil, gregel, rum, eh, ma, adu, eh, alse guman, nde akal, sevi, haige, sa, di, ul, desvi, ed bort, eh, klo, korte, bo, lo, lo, ul, tamartili, ah, um dasen, wasen, nganiya, value, tiel la, um dasen, wasen, girel ngani, le, blu, ah, blu, adal, nganiya, maral, budula, ah, amte te, ul, tuang, la, mraim, eh, nding, girel ader belaol, mong, diel, wasit, tiadikal bayota aral, ma, uer, om execute, ra gantrakt, eh, mal make sure, lo, asay, kom, kom, damalit tiang. Ah, ongerunge, President, tioli, tel, wasay, polsebi el, mo consistent, ah, yel, ah, yel, lo, senya, del girela, international law, leng, nganiya, albe, ra time, kadam dasen, wasay, international law, am, si, si, ra, watamel, la, arbel, eh, ah, diak, um, maral, may say, Sol.
Diak, malu ngi, malu ngi, toko, il, alblam, dung, eh, Senator Korte. Nganiya, ngod.
Nganiya, ngod, em. Alse guma, ndigang, et tir gel goonger, tiel, standing committee report, eleven dash twenty three, du hoy, om tok, namga, ya committee report, flow leader.
Nut, mudonge, session, regid, el mora order, flow leader.
President, adba, sa, recess, eh, kadha, direktil, sel, item eight, agel rogul, mna ra, standing committee reports, kadha, malmol, mal, sel, item nine, ndeakal, ngara, special committee reports, the mo, emul, mora order of the day, tiagal, ngara, unfinished business, kadha, mora, bill calendar, ah, damora, first reading, eh, Mister President, eh, nganiya, sel, Senate Bill eleven dash twenty three, eh, ngara, abia, first reading calendar, gide, mong, ding, lultu, ra discussion, ra, ngara, recess, eh, nganiya, wal, pending, el, urio, il, damatmo, el girel, sel, se gaidil particular bill, ma, me, makmub, el, widro, tiagil, Senate Bill, ra, eleven dash twenty three, ra, calendar, eh, wals, edel mut, lo, ro, ngi, lut, me, se gida motion.
Se gida motion, namdung, eh, second, tir gel rogul, goonger, du hoy, om tok, namga, flow leader.
Kadha, morsel, next, el, bill, ngara, first, ah, reading calendar, mong, mub, madapas, ra first reading, ah, Senate Bill eleven dash twenty four.
Se gida motion, namdung, eh, second, ma, clear, gum, iwe, ta ito.
Senate Bill number eleven dash twenty four, appeal for an act, to amend thirty seven PNC subsection four eleven, to require that the Palau Public Utilities Corporation, provide clean, potable water, to Palau's residents, to add a new chapter eight to title thirty seven, of the Palau National Code, establishing a water security task force, and for other related purposes. Tiel, ul dasun, mola, amamalod, ra thirty seven PNC subsection four eleven, and mo require a Palau Public Utilities Corporation, and provide a clean, and will run, mlamu, ra ader belaol, mo, edra, besa, chapter eight, the title thirty seven, Ra Palau National Code, and katpe, eh, a water security, security task force, ma gukbe, ra ngod, albalkul. Tiel, ul dasun, mola, alulder si, ah, Senator Stevenson J. Korte, Senator Retsi Sagitaya, Senator Mark, Uer, Bela Rudim, Senator Andrew Tabalwal, Senator Kazuki L. Tap Sungino, ma flow leader, ah, Senate, Cecilil Aldaber.
Se gida, sel, ul dasun, mola, namui, va ta ito, lori, imbugunti, ah, Senator Korte, involis, gida, omso, del, Senator Korte.
Sol, eh, President, tiel, tiel, la, akmering, ah, solit, agel, Senator, sel, no, muli, mal, kointroduci, tiel, la, ah, mukter, tiel la, eh, President, ah, di, girela, ah, aral, boss, ira, ader belaol, ngari, akligi, da, aral, malolim, um, mo, la, agel, wayal, blol betik, olbira, lo, kalula, di, lo, wasay, patohol, ndalong, okra, blu belaol, ah, dirga bol, sebi il, nganiya, agel, em, lines, malu be, kligi, da, aral, malolim, ra, be, kelsis, kida, madenge, wasay, ah, aral, ma, tar, agel, do dai, ra, klangar, gide, ra, adra, aral. Masel, wayal, policy, malu be, garbila, aral, merbelaw, akmul, wasay, ah, aral, ma global goal, el mora, ah, held, ra, ader belaol, ma, tiel, bel, ma, or, gide, mal, em, bel wat, direktul, dimuk, ringi, ah, agai, zaire, blu belaol. Ndekl, olbira, kalulam, lo, mutigil, wasay, um, global goal, ah, bodo, sig, ra, aldu ulen, eh, bo, nganiya, kligi, em, em, lines, sel, aral, available, malu be, kutmo, lo, mo dar, sel, mora, ader belaol. Sel, eh, sustainable development goals, eh, nganiya, kora, kapir, ngi, di, ne, atat sel, mortial, ah, bradi, information, ma, Senator, ah, ri, amle, hold, ra, review, malu, tumlo, meser, sel, tretela, la, la, le, se gaidil, sustainable development goal, sel, STG six, am, el goal, girela, mal, lines, a kligi, da, aral, el, tar, agel, girel mo universally access, girel mora, ro, il, ah, el, kligi, eh, sebi el, el, mo, ar, malu be, ar, adam, oh, em, el, mo, usper ngi. Se gaidil, report, tamlo, conclude, or, Sarah, twenty nineteen, lo, wasa, belaol, ah, dirga bol, sebi el, mul, wasay, mlamu, tart, el, basent, agi, da, kligi, da, aral, available in mora. Tiang, alse, ah, constitution, blu belaol, eh, sel, omewal, arigola, asay, ah, held, ter gide, preventive held, a fundamental right, ra, ader belaol, malu, say, gide, ah, aral, ah, mal, global goal, el, girela, ah, held, ra, ader belaol. Sel, RPL eight, dash thirty one, am, ne, eh, milke, viya, ah, toko, il, ngal, girel, sel, Palau Water and Sewer Corporation, lo, asay, girel, mo, te, mo, mengadred, ah, eh, or, ur, eh, agel, ro, il, ngani, eh, national government, water, malu be, aral, eh, ngara, ah, belaol. Sel, section two, RPL nine, dash four, sel, mlamur, ah, Palau Waters, ah, Sewer System. The Palau Water and Sewer System, the PUC, is eligible. And then, the PUC, the Ralm. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. The amendment to page two, Rafael, the line twenty-seven. I want to know if the PUC, the Ralm, is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. Rafael, the Ralm. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. The next page, the line two. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. And then, I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the water system is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. And then, I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. And then, I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. The Sustainable Development Goals, the Twenty Thirty. The task force is established. And then, I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. But I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. If the Ralm is eligible, then I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible.
Senator. Senator Sangbaw.
Mr. President, I want to know if the members of the House can introduce themselves. The legislation is important. I want to point out one thing. Maybe, the legislation. Maybe, capacity. The PUC is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is tested. At the time, the Ralm tested the bacteria. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. At the time, the Ralm tested heavy metal, Mr. President. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. Maybe, the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. At the time, the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. Maybe, the water system is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the members of the House can introduce themselves. Hopefully, the Ralm is responsible for that. Make sure the agencies are responsible for that. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. Senator.
Senator Aldaber.
President, I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm can introduce himself. The Mola. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. The Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. Mr. President, I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the former Prime Minister of Singapore. The Prime Minister Li Kuan Yu. I say. Mr. President, I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. If the Ralm is eligible, then I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. Singapore is a country with a lot of water. The flat water is a source. It's a source. Normally, it's a water source. Malaysia is a water source. It's a water source. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. The Ralm is a political person in Singapore. The Ralm is a political person. The Ralm is a water producer in so many years. The Ralm produces its own water. The water producer in Singapore is a water producer. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. If the Ralm is eligible, then I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. The standard is improved. The PUC is a water producer. The national government, the state government, the PUC are the goals or objectives of the Mola. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. If the Ralm is eligible, then I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the PUC is improving our quality. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the overall intent is behind the Mola. Senator. Introduce yourself. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the leaders are eligible. I want to know if the agencies are eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. And then, I want to know if the resources are available. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. The level of quality of the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is improved. The water is available. The water is available. I want to know if the goal is met. I want to know if the STG, Sustainable Development Goals. Senator.
Senator Agitaya.
Mr. President, I want to know if the water is eligible. The quality of the water is good. The Ralm is eligible. Mr. President, a few years back. The Ralm was eligible. The charge of the Ralm. I want to know if the charge of the Ralm is a twenty-eleven level. I want to know if the Ralm is a sustainable level. I want to know if the outline states. I want to know if the Ralm is at least a sustainable level. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. The charge of the Ralm is an outline state. The Ralm is a level. Mr. President, the resolution is eligible. The PUC is a ten million dollars EDB. I want to improve our services. The Ralm is eligible. And then, I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. Mr. President, I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to improve our systems, the outline states. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible.
Senator Agitaya. Senator Tabalwan.
President, I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the outline state is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the PUC is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible.
Do you? The standing committee report is ready. On top. The assignment is utility. Energy, Senator Agitaya. Leader.
President, the first reading. I want to know if the first reading. The second reading. We have passed the Senate Bill 11-19.
The motion is approved. The committee report has been discussed. I want to know if the committee can approve. The standing committee report is ready. On top. Leader. Leader.
President, the second reading. I want to know if the resolution calendar is ready. And then, the referral. The Senate Resolution 11-26. It is confirming the presidential appointment of Mr. Santi Asanuma as Postmaster of the Republic of Palau. Mr. President, I want to make an assignment to the resolution. I want to know if the committee can approve.
Clerk.
Senate Resolution Number 11-26. A Senate Resolution confirming the presidential appointment of Mr. Santi Asanuma to serve as the Postmaster General of the Republic of Palau. The Senate Resolution Number 11-26. I want to know if the presidential appointment of Mr. Santi Asanuma is a Postmaster General is eligible. The Senate Resolution Number 11-26. I will introduce myself, President of the Senate, Hocuns Paulis.
The resolution is approved. Chairman JGL, Senator Isal.
Point of Information.
Senator Inabo.
Mr. President, I want to raise concern. The appointment of the Postmaster is a term. It's a lifetime appointment. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. Mr. President, I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Chairman Isal is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. The lifetime appointment of Mr. President is reserved. For a specific position. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible.
I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. Senator Isal, I want to know if the Ralm is eligible.
I want to know if the RPL capitol is eligible. I want to know if the RPL is eligible. I want to know if the RPL is eligible. I want to know if the RPL is eligible. From Postmaster to Postmaster General. I want to know if the RPL is eligible. The RPL is eligible. I want to know if the RPL is eligible. The post office. I want to know if the RPL is eligible. The President of the House can approve. The last sentence of the President of the House, Mr. Paulis. The last sentence of the appointment is a term. With the consent of the Senate of the Ralm. I will appoint Mr. Asanuma to the position of Postmaster General with immediate effect and that appointment will continue through January twenty twenty-five. Meaning, four years. I want to know if the Ralm is eligible. And then, I want to know if the President of the House is eligible. I want to know if the appointment is eligible. I want to know if the four years is eligible. I want to know if the four years is eligible. Once you're appointed by the President, you're appointed under his 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 ministers. The ministers. I want to know if the four years is eligible. And then, I want to know if the four years is eligible. Since Isal, the senators in the past have raised their hand. And then, the RPS have 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 have
Leader.
Mr. President, to the referral resolution. The Senate Joint Resolution 11-3. I want to know if the RPL is eligible. Mr. President, the decision of the committee is we have to approve. The Senate Joint Resolution 11-3. The withdrawal.
The motion is approved. The standing committee report is ready. On top. Leader.
President, I want to know if the RPL is eligible. The resolution is I want to know if the Senate Joint Resolution 11-4 is approved. I want to know if the committee can approve.
Clerk.
Senate Joint Resolution Number 11-4. A Senate Joint Resolution. I want to know if the RLM is eligible. I want to know if the RLM is eligible. I want to know if the RLM is eligible. I want to know if the RLM is eligible. I want to know if the RLM is eligible. I want to know if the RLM is eligible. I want to know if the RLM is eligible. I want to know if the RLM is eligible. I want to know if the RLM is eligible. I want to know if the RLM is eligible. I want to know if the RLM is eligible. I want to know if the RLM is eligible. The school is eligible. The Malaysia is eligible. I want to know if the RLM is eligible. I want to know if the RLM is eligible. El olang alid el aderbelao. El olotela makreos sel digesed. Momaringalergida adalu talmo olge serengi. Aosis aklala tokorbelao agirel motara ngarbab almoktek ra amtergid. Ra aderbelao. The Senate Joint Resolution number eleven dash four. Alul dursiya Senator Andrew Tabalwal. Senator Kazugi El Tap Sungino. Senator Senate Floor Leader Cecilil Aldabel. Senate Vice President Karaima Yur. Senator Stevenson J. Quartey. Senator Marco Erbalaurudim. Ma Senator TJ. Senator TJ Imru Ramosau. Senator Richie Sagitaya. Senator Umi Sangabao. Senator Jonathan Shoy Isal. Ma Senator Robai Kikowo Inabo.
Bodum tiras Senator Tabalwal ambolbiskida omso del. Teal Senate Joint Resolution. Senator Tabalwal.
Wasi President, akval omol merang asuleme mal merang asulira roguin. Senator sera loda alime gutmukli teal resolution. Akuteng malsoal almodong iya adang iya uulte al urior. Kada mora blura ngaralong. Eh, aklo seakamasi Senator Sungino melong dingras school longe. Atiche novenal de se ra ngaralong elementary school. Segi bo mesangatral manneberedala nulawase. Komgrasa beil gutmuklia larolbeel teal tokorbelao. Diakaswe ededi ilbangar ngi teaswal malan mo dyaradronle. Ngashe akamangia muri tai ma akolmar gira ilarak. Di ngashe aknatakatal sensei ma budangalia school long ngaramon merangalra school et temet muras school. Matinget tokorbelawe kada ngadudu tokorbelao. Wasi el alsi sia ngalgalmera schoola, albera school, silgotel silsera otu school. Et temel mogotengil musu va tokora belao. Le ngwal ngarabla tadi muro tokoramrigel musi gi da waluspe. Segi dal omiltkele ngal sensei agi moliwet kalmoduura bekl school le ngwal wa isey Osirar Sensei. Egardegal amal swali mea maklulada mokdengli tiang. Wasen mea wangara elirgid, egadu wangaralela angakluwukong girel gid. Ma moktegert tegi dal resolution na ngarmtada malbaka takla tritire. Alakabudagal roguil aderbelao lte birarumud. Ebu dalai imad wasen komgras miklulil ndiakal moitet teal tingi. Ma tru ragan gade tergeel mer teal bla yel olbiragulaw. Lda okl olbiragulaw. Magramal mulu mel mokdudu atokorbelao. Mongalwalur sel digesed ra iralmei. Egodongalo set ader olbiragulaw. Mar aderbelawa isey. El birataimin sebeel malmo omso sova tokora ikel ngarbar. Eh, momra ora tokora blulad. Euridi sel makreos ra el digesed ra iralmei. So tegi da maldim moktegert teal resolution wasey. Naklo gerendiragatal mkatmokra ulen mo kase. Kudire dalu urak monger. Mat tiang moktegert teal wasegadu tubdi. Eutubdi mora bekl aderbelao eh. Koraya akso ra adronle dal wasey memdo mu urra. Attingela omlisi ela tokorbelao. Ndiakal se edel moma iralmei. Di doral el tingirina bekl chilse, ndiwadona takla ralge dalakla wasey. Arangalgirel diakadestri ra modong okla wasegadangatlangatle nganiyamil gudebora belao ra. Maralmen. Kudorekada atamet. Ma bulwat. Ma makreos el tokorbelao ngi adigese. Segi de President ta maldi tergi blomso del tiang. Akderegul malolitra beklada ngania korabere delara ndilgirel tokorbelaa. Please ra ngayin sey lo tubdumbol. Tubdengil beklada ated ra ngayin sey ra usulang.
Senator Quartey.
Shula, President, madriel wase etan Senator Tabalwal amnamo talal. San delurol teal resolution. Para di. Le uldeswe alwasi okmoral toimtia dimle mal talmo adoption. De se kutuldeswe.
Senator Isal.
Akmoser anasel motion. Alse elebomutbokra aftera mokdudu. Aftera mokdudu ndinsoal moqme edutokol girel tiang. Akutte akutakmo almito asengaga luim eh rola ma luim eh argi kemtitum isatoorbelao. Ndogotu skura maristelal di mngiwa katedi smol tokora marigel. Momregel mora skura ruguma kngiwa baiboli tokora marigel. Emrada ingaga marigel ma timlo omso bal tokora marigel. Bak titul mulu isatoorbelao. Emlas mulu mokdudu atokorbelaga ilatto malatokoi. Mang akta tegeel. Ngarti agi dal list ra atangakl kirsensei ra. Angalong. Wasi meng. Akmal mosportet tiang. Di eru on tik. Malsebeel abadutritinget technical. Si gamamobetian mora adoption et ngure lang. Abu mesra kempo. Eh, diaka diaka kapiro kaseltorbelao. Ma timasal sel English portion, sel Article eight rakempo gid. Uh, sel General Provision, sel Section one. Ekmongevagal oiwi. Teatokora marigel ma kmongevagal kuradi omesengil marigel eh edulil belao eh. Quartey, Senator Quartey na kanstition. Klenbensen triwada aklamutengi. Mangkulu wasi Article eight, section. One teasel General Provision. Kasi atokorbelao. Ra ilar traditional language. Amo national language. Mutokora blurbelao. Palawan and English. Atokora abelama tokora. English amo official language, mo official tokil uspe. Olbiragulawa ngaralil. El mo otortikli. Asel malamaltu spel. Eh, erura igal tokoi. It's of its language. Malbaka takki. Tokora megil asia palawan language, traditional language shall be the national language. Ekmalbaka takki asia palawan and English shall be the official language. Ekmu wasi de olbiragulaw shall determine the appropriate use of its language. Tiang amal mutokaki segi ngarakempo. Ndisel uksection two teagi da tergi bloramo awanai. Ma timo oiwi for the purpose rising ngarakantition. Uksection two akmu wasia palawan and English. Portioner teal konstition shall be equally authoritative. Mat tokorbelao, mat tokora. Amrigel ngatyaletamela la adusi shu akrisiel. However, asumonya mondai. Ya English portion shall tokora marigel shall preprebe. Segi da koramu. Okora amo weekend. Rat tokora bela weekend. Utitul teagi dal gergid. Ndi ngaaga mal supportet tiang. Et teagi da dumutel resolution la. Asumosebe edu koradi. Motrititil technical dimalo kotet teal ngarakantition. El tokorbelao. Putitsegi aborion tokorbelao cheedla kiwi. Article eight, section one. Edumusel tokorbelao luktungit teagi dal title iliwi akler. Ngingeredan ultuira kempo smisiya urulda urul ngi. Eh, olngitla wasi Mister President. Sel may tiad teal bla yel bora hau sel may. Ebu dal lap tokora marigel. Il mora oradio. Mo every day, radias mas eh eh nine point nine maribelao. Il bekl tutau, tri tam seday. Il mo ivet tiang. Na oradio. La di dorengas advertisement. Ra uturelasop ma agal ma syugang. Ebu dorengas advertisement. Ra igagi da maklabul tokoy ngarakempo. Il finally in twenty twenty one egita mikisang. Eh, ma mokrok eh ma. Amurur ngi. Shula.
Senator Inabo.
Mister President, akmal merang asulela. Senator Tabalwal etel malungin resolution. Eh, akmal. Uh, akumdaseng ngania alit tulat tokorbelao. Adiaka diaka textbook. Mang tigelsensei rascula deregal malstrakolend diaka textbook. Uh, onyerunge, Mister President, ta diaka bukar arangalgal tokorbelao. Ak madongakhaskura heris segi moiwa igel ya se dilup armurt drakadra. Eh, ndiaka egana mo diakal arangalgarbelada diakalodangeya omuiwa tokorbelao. So, akumdaseng abay gire dal moru lialla ma Palau Language Commission amo malu sa textbook. Eh, momlu sa. Our reading buharangalga mang mosapeera ngalgal relate tel. Teal language agirel relate tel mora klangargid, egadamo understand that wasi. Teal tingi da teyaklangargid. Mang, umal cloa challenge. Meleng lamor ngia Facebook ama. Uh, TV el maldi tokora ngarbar. Mat tokorbelao agirel mo kampit lobongilake if we want to win, we have a war to to win. Ndiakalil. Um, deot aureled ma. Akalmutlul ngitla sel lutal momsisi aureled. Smiga aldu ulel el porangia reading materials sel sebeerangalgarbelal moiyo. Shula ngi Mister President.
Senator Quartey.
Omeme President, mutunawalak ti. Nganiisel tokel dilya tankal Senator Isal. Uh, onyerul kankanamno melti. Mendil wasen sel goriya klagabos ya tokorbelama momsisi. Dimlesoal clarifarse.
Senator Rudim.
Manso le Mister President, eh, merang asula tankal Senator Tabalwal introduce teale resolution. Tokorbelao. Ma amlamu laringi. Eh, Mister President, teki diswada di share marbeklada se tiang amomlisi sel moktegra RPL eight dash fifty five. Blansan ringira December twenty twelve. Momandaita igal school, ilmojisa aknatokorbelao. Bagadi segi de Mister President, amral igal language eh. Amral identity teri de wukum. Ege derektrakla balela blurbelao lo otid wasegadokuwa tagalekada. Adra taigeol. Arawan ocean country. Rekmal, shula ngi Mister President.
Senator Remoso.
Shula, Mister President. Direk al mal malongilaronuke, Mister Senator Tabalwal el mesat tiang. Eh, kabdengi kadamla adu ulgirel teagi dal tokol direk mang malkoratmearonudel mesal ma adumra. Amtadre el alsi. Akmokmuike Senatore direk. Mletalku example ra blura korea. Il mora arangalgarbelao. Wasi gi da amlamu expose ra igal KBS. Ma mkluo omesa korea ma mgaqare mukadu direk al lamu kora omes. Esel domesakorea. Ya subtitle atokora marigel. Le ngara, tiradi malu tokorabluri. Eh, mklul bulu uldakal wa igi dal diluyul te la. Mongora moraaronudel wasen ngaramkada man mksal ade. Eh, man amo usua tingi de akoreal kadala blua ma dirak momsisi attingil merel alta. Mangkada man orangasuleme Senator Tabalwal. Ah, direk ditara concern wasi. Asabele dedirek smisi italuror ra tokoraspeeling. Rekumdaswe ngirel motroklaspeeling le makita dal dosis akraganke da taraspeeling. El boras schoola bol misteh. Akmal gore teal era ma mea. Ma Mister President, ta direk le share ngira taraduun. Wasen koragania confusion wasen ngaraniya dospe ringi. Kadospe rama, lma. Kadospe rama, lme. Deosusua dolgorigin di daspe laringi ngagaro. Ege gi de akura. Abi concern mesel bodo ngatmokre sel malmo wasegagi da girem musu bal tokorbelao. El baka takka waseng mea ang era. Nimlegi gi de Senator Tabalwal akmal kangratshulitera karamalungin doder. Thank you.
Senator Tabalwal.
Manso tilane, kadi kixpana tabulotokoya sel dilya Senator Inabong. Lakatakasertel waseng gire dal multo dawdudel kangester ra kla dalela omso bal tokorbelao. Ra honra school ma. Egil kla dal omso lelaltaim diragatal serakuaministry namutelandiragatal time multo dawdudel momara. Adongur omso bal tokorbelao. Teagi langaniya labasensei aditi mingi tugosi eh di tiil moktuklem diraga. Awdudul mayakul girel se yil mengatiang. Et sel tokora otargukkela omla sera tokorbelao. Yil mokduli tilanga yil ngania langutskamission mesia bol ngaralil gutmukli. Ndikndilil wasia schoola blurbelao sera uspa alsel egadu turgok ngaratiat tritire la ordo grafil milgatmokna. Il doguyun wasegda era. Omalu sey iarma el gakayakle yangania wamnomoktega wa isey. Ndibeere ngania rada la langutskamission se ilu lomke la schoolo turgukkilo waseng girel gid. Di segi da bol motrogoklen mohusungidra urur. Di sogalkiledegi.
Senator Isal.
Last. Mister President, ta ulakno mencion ra. Amo oreli tiang. La TV balora TV mapadio. Teal title milui serulio ngi akler. Abu mrangal wase the best forum. Il available at the altar. Is through internet ma cellphone. If somehow we can get the kids. Every kids lo cellphonea dingwa ngara elementary school, high school. Especially elementary school lo dingwa. Eh, somehow ngania bol esangal through his or her cellphone teagi title. Start the movie wangi, I think it will click the interest. Akdremembe ra kakeril bui neganwasin. Kadim kastalgimi awakblunga awakblungekamga President ida man amo uodal. Nargania awedio adult education by terul rubagar oreor. Rubagar apurbelao. Adalbay master oas. Iju remembe temerangrebelao abekututau. Eh, guk suvia imot tokora marigel. Eduli eh guk waset tiangala bulgultokorbelao. Ndesa oas repeat malu adalbay repeat. Nela oradio wa Herman Dodasaburra ngi marwata. Eh, ye gi dal teknikas segi ra sixty. Akmoga doyu edel mot teknikare laan logiwa. Abesel forum ra communication logiwarwa internet. Ma asal ngoga ditu on la channel twenty six. Ma channel twenty five, ma twenty three, ma twenty four ditu wes. Ah, omloigera, a pari, family reunion. Mo omangat, ilam namor ngia kamilde. Which is good entertainment. What about simple program ra language? I think it takes. A little bit creativeness. El diakadidangara old style of teaching. The books, magrang. Let's get into these things because our kids have these things. Shula.
Senator Aldabel.
President. Akmal deregel mo choja rita de madimoraknia. Emalomrak mesetiyaya taradirek kloututire palasil. El dogat moklil teal olbiragulaw. Nsebeel li dal mora yil result almo sobaklim malu ben. Smisiya uspalela tingi da aderbelao. Akti goamalatke kmaseng. Um, ngultu ra kamen tra beklada teal. Uh. Uh, Senate Joint Resolution na walkoraa. Amlamu ablasing ra beklada. Ma ti soal di kamen kmasegi. Bolsebeel. Direk Chairman. Uh, introduceerel. El bodo mesra motletelale la aloliat teal resolution malu ben. Um, mo part of recommendation ra kamitil mohusubeni. Uh, mo. Rulia koraa alad malu ben task force. Il mo oal longara al lo mesagagi dal gagarousel stensara oreor malu ben. Daora oreor ngara gagarousel alad. Il mo osabeel lo mesagel regamendation malu ben. Mteletara oreor el bol recommend. El reportel merah leader simbol sebeedel. Il mosporta igi dal recommendation. Logiwa allocation of resources malu ben. Um, ayel guk sebeedro darsel neswell mo. Osmisi ayegi dal laad almo ngatmokla igi dal gagarousel daora oreor. Eh, ngaaga malomrak mesetiyal. Resolution alborra. Salital bla ra salidasia hau. Et laadirek maldi mo endorsement il. Mang. Witataktirek gorawa. Obentiririrek babyar Senator sel regamend kmasse bolsebeedel. Ay place teara. Adoption calendar e bolsebeedel. Ngumu bolse meredel musabitange. Ndiakamekralisel momosion eh, President.
Mulmora.
El mobert teal ra referral calendar mora. Adoption calendar e bolsebeedel. Adapt ringir alsi.
Kam. Kamit mora short resistera era debortilang. Diakakte. Dangesessioner gid al mora order. Floor Leader.
President, the. La discussioner sel Senate Joint Resolution eleven dash four teal. Otargaklear atokorbelao. Eh, koram lewitsa kantsensusera. Uh, da. La dangaraw reses kmasse bol lutel mor ngar akmal lamso al subel ma. Um, dolite mam asainel ngil mora kamitim bol sebeel watmokla. Mal lamso lamso lamsubel.
Bol isey mokasainel ngil mora Chairman of Education ma lutel mo gutmukli malmo. Momile lutel metode Senator Tabalwal.
...
Frere Leader.
Mr. President, we have adopted an adoption.
If the floor is reserved, please ask the senator.
I'm not sure.
I'm not sure.
Oh, okay.
We have an adoption calendar. We have approved Senate Resolution 11-23. The clerk will give the title.
Senate Resolution Number 11-23. A Senate Resolution confirming the presidential appointment of Ms. Jacqueline Alexander to serve as a member of the Board of Directors of Palau Public Utilities Corporation for a term of three years. Now, Senate Resolution Number 11-23. I am going to approve the presidential appointment of Ms. Jacqueline Alexander to serve on the board of directors of Palau Public Utilities Corporation, the Council of Edera. The resolution is approved by President of the Senate, Hoconspaulis, by request.
Is the resolution approved for Jacqueline Alexander to be on the board? PPOC, the clerk, Rose Abalo, short trishes. Do you want to order it? The decision is that Jacqueline Alexander is on the board of PPOC for 11 years and she will represent the Senate in March. Congratulations. Frere Leader.
Mr. President, we have adopted the next resolution. We have approved Senate Resolution 11-24.
The motion is rejected. The clerk will give the title.
Senate Resolution Number 11-24. A Senate Resolution confirming the presidential appointment of Mr. Terence Rulud to serve as a member of the Board of Trustees of the Social Security Administration for a term of four years. The Senate Resolution Number 11-24. I am going to approve the presidential appointment of Mr. Terence Rulud on the board of trustees of the Social Security Administration, the Council of Walra. The Senate Resolution Number 11-24. I approve President of the Senate, Hoconspaulis, by request.
Is the resolution approved for Terence Rulud? The clerk, Rose Abalo, short trishes. The decision is that Terence Rulud is on the board of Social Security for 10 years and no. Congratulations to Terence. Frere Leader.
Mr. President, we have adopted the next resolution. We have approved Senate Resolution 11-25.
The clerk will give the title.
Senate Resolution Number 11-25. A Senate Resolution confirming the presidential appointment of Mr. Satoru W. Agachi to serve as a member of the Board of Trustees of the Social Security Administration for a term of four years. The Senate Resolution Number 11-25. I am going to approve the presidential appointment of Satoru W. Agachi on the board of trustees of the Social Security Administration, the Council of Walra. The Senate Resolution Number 11-25. I approve President of the Senate, Hoconspaulis, by request.
Is the resolution approved for Satoru Agachi to be on the board? The clerk, Rose Abalo, short trishes. Do you want to order it? The decision is that Satoru Agachi is on the board of SS for 10 years and no. We will read the document. Congratulations. Frere Leader.
Mr. President, we have adopted the next resolution. We have adopted item 13, item 13, 14, the number 15, petitions, memorials, and communications. The note, Misselene's Communication, 11-92. It has an annual performance report for schools in Palau. The director, the director of the board of members. The director of Misselene's Communication, 11-93. It has the official report in Palau. I'm going to tell the senator, Mimi Isnabaw. The commissioner of the Council of Chiefs has commented regarding Senate Bill Number 11-20, the Fishery Development Fund Act. The director, the director. The director of Misselene's Communication, 11-94. It has the Ministry of Community and Cultural Affairs. The mayor, the president, Paulis. It has approved annual reporting of Palau Civilly Disabled Assistant Fund. The director, the director. The director of the information. The director, the director. Misselene's Communication, 11-95. It has the official Minister of Finance. The mayor told Senator Gubai Inabo. It has approved a meeting on tax reform information and education plan. The director of the information, the director of the reference. The director, the director. Misselene's Communication, 11-96. It has the official office of the Council of Chiefs. It has approved FY 2021 Performance Report. The director, the director. Then, the director. Misselene's Communication, 11-97. It has the Palau National Olympic Committee, the president, the senators. The Palau NOC Sports Award Banquet invitation and sponsorship. Sponsorship solicitation. The director of the board of upcoming sponsorship program. The board of the joint. The director, the director. Misselene's Communication, 11-98. It has the EQPB. The mayor, the president, Surongalwips. It has approved FY 2021. The director, the director. The information. The communication. The realization. We have adopted RM16 in Misselene's Business, the senators. The board of the business.
If the leader, if you want to. The senator is not willing to give the number. The Misselene's Communication, the Palau National Olympic Committee. It is directed by support. The senators are giving a sponsorship solicitation. The senators. The EQPB. The board of services. The senators. The board of services. Then, minimize expenses for services. The board of the senator, Isal.
Mr. President, I would like to ask you just one minute. I would like to ask the board of the communication, number 11-92. I would like to mention the public school. I would like to mention the annual performance report for the school. I am impressed, Mr. President. If you look at the record for the past couple of years. The non-public school funding. The national government. The report. The Missara Maristela, the Missanti, the STA. Elementary and high school. The Emmaus. Petania. The annual performance report for non-public schools. I am impressed. The comprehensive. The open. The school. The senior. The school. It is interesting. The one of the pieces. The school. The school. High school. Elementary, I'm not sure. The high school. And then, for FY 2021 proposed in Gamartir. The total budget was $257,000. From government appropriation. The school. The fundraising. Student fees, $127,000. The expenses always spent less than around 60%. A total source of revenue. For example, in 2021 school year, budget was $257,000. Actual cost proposal expended was $166,000. I hope the school. I hope the ministry. I hope Palau School. The government. The school. Report. The approval. The school. The principal. The chairman of directors. The chairman of reports. I hope the government. We call us. The annual report. Thank you.
Misselene's. Senator Inabo.
Mr. President, I would like to refer to the number. The minister. Misselene's 11-95. Mr. President, I would like to provide the information. The document. The board of the meeting. The request. The mayor. I would like to give information. The board. The document. The document. The explanation. The impact. The Comprehensive Tax Reform Act. The board of the. The board of the hearing. The board of understanding. The issues he is bringing up. At the concern. Mr. President, I would like to say. 2014 Poverty Analysis. The space. I would like to get the information from 2014. 2014. I would say. Obli Raabalur Palau. 12%. 13%. I feel the poverty line. I feel the poverty line. And 20%. I feel poverty line. 20% vulnerable. I would say. But, Mr. President. I would say. 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 But, I would say. I would apply inflation rate. I would say. I would calculate inflation. And I would say inflation in 2014 and 2021. Inflation. I would say. Seven years. 11.1%. I would say. Each year, 2021, 22, 23, 1.7% inflation. The CPI. I would say inflation. I would say. But, I would say. 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 But, I would say. The president. I would say. Taxes. I would say. I would say. I would say. The president. I would say. I would say. I would say. I would say. Poverty Line. Yeah. I would say. I would say. I would say. I would say. Part of population. The pandemic. I would say COVID-19 economic crisis. I would move. I would close. I would say. But, I would say. The important. The meeting. The minister. I would understand. I would say. Good. I would say. 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 Mr. President, I would schedule a meeting on Thursday or Friday. I would say. I would say. I would say. The meeting. The finance. Thank you.
The senator Inabo. I would say. 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 50%. I would say. I would say. I would say. I would say. 50%. I would say. I would say. I would say. Senator Inabo.
I would say. I would say. Mr. President, except the fixed income. I would say. I would say. I would say. Thank you.
I would say. I would say. The board of the board of members. Senator Alvea.
I would say. The Misselene's Communication, 11-98. The board of the president. It has approved the budget. The president has assigned the chairman. Environment. I would say. Communication. The board of the. Verify. The budget outlook. I would say. Six months. September. I would say. I would say. The budget. Supplies. The board. The quality. Quality. I would say. Monitoring. I would say. 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 Item. I would say. Increase. Staff. I would say. Do with those. I would say. IRM. The salary. Next six months. I would say. Budget. I would say. I would say. Negative 53,000. Exactly. I would say. The president. I would say. The initiative. The budget. The agencies. I would say. Make sure. The impact. The communication. I would say. I would say. Operation. I would say. As a chairman. I would say. I would say. I would say. Impact. The board of the president. Thank you, Mr. President.
I would say. The third tier. Prepare. The budget. I would say. I would say. Additional. The senator Quartey. The board. Lorenz. I would say. I would say. I would say. Additional. I would say. Additional. I would say. 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 Senator Rudim.
Mr. President. Mr. President. I would say. I would say. I would say. Senator Inabo. I would say. Inflation factor. I would say. Inflation factor. I would say. 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 The budget. I would say. Inflation factor. I would say. I would say. Adjustment. Allocation. Mr. President. I would say. I would say. Senate Bill Number 11-3, 11-22. I would say. Corporate registry. I would say. March. I would say. I would say. Concern. I would say. I would say. Corporate registry. I would say. 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 Senate Bill Number 11-8. I would say. Palau Private Bank. The chairman. I would say. I would say. Recommendation. I would say. Corporate registry. 11-3, 11-22. I would say. I would say. Chairman. I would say. I would say. Information. I would say. I would say. Incorporated. I would say. I would say. I would say. Committee. I would say. 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 Private sector. Attorney General. FIC. I would say. I would say. Corporate registry. The history. Mr. President. I would introduce. I would say. 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 Mr. President. I would say. I would say. I would say. Of course. I would say. Expertise. I would say. 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 Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chairman Rudim. Senator Isal.
Mr. President. With due respect. I would like to say. Assignment. Senator Isnabaw. The board of the board. For the record. I would say. I would say. The other chairman. The board of the president. Although he was the president. I would say. Unified Budget for 2021. He didn't mention anything about the board. So perhaps he has an idea of how to take care of it. I would say. 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 Chairman Isnabaw. Okay. The president. I would say. I would say. I would say. I would say. Budget. How are you going to. I would say. I would say. I would say. I would say. For this amount. With the time left for FY 2021. Knowing the history. I would say. I would say. I would say. I would say. At the end of FY 2021. I would say. I would say. I would say. He didn't say anything about. I would say. I would say. Possible. I would say. The board. I would say. I would say. The president. I would say. I would say. The board. I would say. I would say. Let the executive branch. Take the first. I would say. 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 The director. The president. I would say. 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 Perhaps the intention of the board. I would say. The president first. I would say. I would say. The president. I would say. I would say. At the end of FY 2021. I would say. 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 Thank you.
The senator Isal. I would say. I would say. I would say. I would say. Chairman of Tourism. I would find out. I would say. It's information. I would say. I would say. I would say. I would say. The president. I would say. I would say. Senator Isnabaw.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would say. I would say. I would say. The senator Isal. I would say. Actually. I would say. The board of the board. Not only on this issue. I would say. The board of the board. I would say. Proposal legislation. I would say. 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 Government Association. My speakers association. I would say. 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 The Senate. I would say. I would say. I would say. Opportunity. I would say. I would say. I would say. I would say. Thank you, Mr. President.
I would say. Senator Sumino.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would say. 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 Dinner banquet. I would say. I would say. I would say. The Misselene's Communication, 11-97. I would say. 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 The senator Isolino. I would say. I would say. Donation. I would say. 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 Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Sumino. Frere Leader.
Mr. President, I would say. 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 But, Mr. President. I would say. I would say. Special session. I would say. I would say. I would say.
The motion is rejected. The rock will go. I would say. I would say. Thank you.